I'd like to call it Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Fenslow. Cluke. Stube. Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Got a couple of presentations tonight. One is, Mr. Kleffner, I'd like to invite you up. It's National Public Works Week, so we've got a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Papillion. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services can be, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Papillion to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works first responders and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas this year, 2025, marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, Mayor David Black, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th as National Public Works Week in the city of Papillion and urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life for all. Thanks for what you do. Want to share anything?
Thank you. Like every time of, like every year when this comes around, I like to remind everybody about the, you know, as Nebraska's official tree starts sprouting up, please pay attention to the road workers around. Put your phones down, keep your eyes up. A lot of people don't know this, but street road, street road maintenance workers actually have a higher injury and fatality rate than police officers and firefighters. So just be aware of that as you're driving through construction zones or seeing guys doing roadway repairs. I also want to thank council. You know, right now I'm going through my budget here, and council, since I've been here and before I was here, has always been focused on maintaining our public's works infrastructure, whether it be water, sewer, or roadway. It makes my job a lot easier and it makes my staff's morale a lot better, knowing that you guys care about us and make sure that we have what we need to do to do our jobs. So thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Chief Gottschop. Got a special presentation swearing in of two new firefighters. Chief?
Thank you. Give us just a minute as we position ourselves for our presentation. Awesome. Mayor, council, fire chief, I just think it's important for us to understand the significance of a badge-pinning ceremony, and I try to keep us all up to speed with the traditions associated with that, and the fire service is very heavy in that badge-pinning. But as I kind of inform all of you what that means, I'm really talking to these two right here because I really wanted to impact them. When we go through a badge-pinning ceremony, and departments will do it different throughout the country, whether it's the chief, or it's a relative that's in the fire service, or a family member, there's a significance with that. And one is, it's about public trust. Remember who you work for. You work for the public. And I would hope, and just knowing both of you now, is, I do know, that you need to give 100% effort to the public. You have made a promise to uphold a duty or a standard of who we are in the fire service, and that's nothing to be taken lightly. It's also the passing of the reins. You will one day take my place. You are the future of the fire service, and we want you to be prepared and ready for those changes. During your oath that the mayor will give you, you're going to hear words like support, allegiance, obligation, faithful, impartial, to the best of my ability. It's a great honor to serve as a firefighter, and take that from 32 years of service. I've loved every minute of it. You've been trained. You're prepared to serve our communities at any time and in any situation, and now you'll take the oath. Mayor, let me just give a little description, and then I'll have you come up and give the oath. So the two firefighters getting the oath today is First Firefighter Chris Gray. His mom and family are here. Chris was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska, attended Ron Colly Catholic High School. You grew up in my neck of the woods, that Benson area, so you and I do have some connection there. Currently, Chris is a sergeant in the Army Reserves. He got into the Army Reserves because he wanted to be a firefighter, and during his interview, he told me, "Didn't do a lot of firefighting, chief. Got a lot of training, but I was at the needs of the Army." If that could tell you what, he wasn't doing a lot of things, but he had the training that we liked. During that process of the interview, one thing that stood out about Chris for me was, he was never deterred by setback, and I like that with people that we hire for these types of positions. Time and time again, went to a different unit, got involved as being kind of a medical clinician, got involved with the state fire marshal's office. For that period of time, from his graduation till now, he has shown perseverance, and those are the types of people that we need in the fire service today. And I'm thankful. So, want to, Mom, go ahead and pin his badge on? Awesome. Can you introduce your family here to us?
My mom's nigger. This is Chris Senior. And my twin brother Will and his girlfriend Manny.
Awesome. Awesome. Firefighter Sam McGuire. Grew up in Papillion, graduated from Papillion High, so you're a monarch, correct? Okay. When he graduated, he joined the Nebraska Air National Guard. Same field of interest, firefighting, so it's in your blood, both of you. Was deployed to the Middle East. Thank you for your service. So again, shows dedication, pride, resolve to do what's right in the sense of who we are in this country. During his interview, I asked him, "Why do you want to be a Papillion firefighter?" And he says, "I want to work in the community I live in. I know this community, and I want to be a part of that." And I thought that was pretty good. Again, his passion, he kept reiterating multiple times of how he's always wanted to be a firefighter, and it was shown through all of the courses, the things that he's done through his military career till this point. So I was very much excited to see him. Again, both of these candidates have performed extremely well. So Dad, would you do the honors of pinning his badge? And then, can you introduce your family to us?
That's my dad. His name's John. My mom, my daughter.
Okay. Awesome.
My younger brothers out there in Fort Worth.
He could have come in too, but anyway. Okay, Mayor, I think they're ready for the oath of office.
So I think you say your oath, but you read it right again. I state your name.
I say my course.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the state of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
For our domestic.
For our domestic.
That I bear true faith.
That I bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and heartily.
And I will faithfully and heartily.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
Perform the duties of firefighter.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of.
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force of violence.
By force of violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
And I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force of violence.
By force of violence.
So long may God.
So long may God.
Congratulations.
Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. Congratulations, Sam and Chris. Welcome to the Papillion family. And another congratulations. Congrats to Lieutenant Jason Sharp for graduating from the 2425 Leadership Sarpy Program. Lieutenant Sharp's legacy group is working with the Papillion Arts Foundation, the city and the NRD to paint a mural on the Levy Trail by the 84th Street Bridge with the beautiful butterfly design and to set the framework for other Levy Designs projects. And so there's a handout at your, at your spots about the project, so if you want more information about the project. And there was another legacy group that also chose Papillion for their project. They're working with the Nebraska Vietnam Veterans Memorial to update their donation boxes with QR codes to make it easier for people to donate online for them. So congrats to all the graduates. It truly is a great program for the community and all of Sarpy County, so thank you to the chamber for hosting that program. And today, we held a quarterly Fire Department and MFO meeting. There will be a special MFO meeting on June 24th to go over their fiscal year 2526 budget recommendations, which they will then present to the city council, as you guys know. You guys ultimately approve it, but they make a recommendation. Other items that were discussed today was the Fire Department's current budget is on track, which is, which is always great. Halfway through the budget year, they're right where they need to be, so that's good. The new training facility will hopefully be completed by the end of the summer. The replacement medic unit and the new engine that were ordered are both scheduled to be delivered in 2026. We were hoping 2025. I may have said previously that it may be 2025, but it is being delayed now to 2026. We will have to carry over those funds for next year. We do have eight fire investigators. Seven are with the Fire Department, one with the Police Department, that we are getting trained, and they're continuing with their training, so things are going well there. And we do have a joint training program with our new firefighters with Bellevue. And you did see our two new firefighters tonight were a product of that, and that training is going very well. So our chiefs gave an update on that today as per the MFO. And then our contractors with the Fricki Field Veterans Park Parking Lot should be fully completed this week. They just have a few minor things to do to finish with that. If you haven't been there, take a look. It looks great. It's a huge upgrade to what we had before. So it'll hopefully be all open and ready for everybody here in the, in the next couple of days. Papio Bay Pool is opening soon. It opens this Saturday, May 24th, and the splash pads are already open across the city, so everybody can go out there and enjoy those. A reminder that the farmer's market starts tomorrow, and it runs every Saturday, or excuse me, every Wednesday through August 13th, except the Wednesday of Papillion Days, which is June 11th. And then also a reminder for everybody that the farmer's market is going to be out, out here outside of City Hall, the 100 block of East 3rd Street, due to the construction project at City Park, so just a reminder. And we do expect that there may be a few issues this first week, and we will work through those. So if anybody gets complaints, reach out to us. We will, we're going to try to work through those. So we, we are looking forward to the City Park upgrades and for the future years, all the upgrades that we do at City Park. So just bear with us, everybody, for this, this year with, with the farmer's market. And then just one final reminder, City Hall and city offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th, this next Monday, in observation of Memorial Day. The city of Papillion honors and remembers those service members who made the ultimate sacrifice for this country and for all of our freedoms, not just on Memorial Day, but every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilwoman Gluck. Any proponents or opponents? You want to poll C-7, is that correct? Okay, so C-7 is polled. Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C-7.
He is zero and eight.
Motion passes. Next is item C-7, Resolution R. 250098. A resolution to approve an inner local agreement with Sarpy County for the Shram Road 132nd to 144th Street Improvement Project. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 250098? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Sunday. Yes, Mr. Kleffner?
Mike Kleffner, Public Works. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My questions have more to do with the timing on this than, than, because I think it's eventually what happened regardless. But this land, I drove by there, it's, it's all ag land on the south, it looks like.
Yes, sir.
And on the north side is the National Cemetery, at least for portion of that roadway. And it's already paved three-lane, at least to the entrance of that National Cemetery.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, it looks like it's all ag. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is it under contract to someone now to be developed?
No, not currently. This project actually came, came to our attention from the county. The county actually requested to be a partner on this project. So they're picking up their, they're picking up the southern half. We're picking up the northern half. We actually, they brought this to our attention last year via Congressman Flood's Community Development Grant Program.
That was, that was my next question. There's federal money. There would be 80% of the project, correct?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
Potentially. So last year, we were, we were unofficially awarded that. Basically, it got put to, to, I don't want to say this. It made it through the program, made it through the House Selection Committee, and then as part of the continuing resolution that was passed last year under the current administration, it didn't get included. They actually...
Did not, or did?
Did not. Did not. They made a priority selection this year for, for the projects that were selected. So we were able to submit outside of what would be the normal selection process. For the, the projects that were selected previously didn't get funded. They were allowed to, to submit under a separate priority selection process. That's going through the process right now. Right now, we're taking the project through the design portion, and then, and then if the funding isn't there after the design portion, then we'll stop the project and basically come back and see where we're at in the sense of costs and budget allocation.
So, might be a dumb question, but why are we being asked to vote on this now if we don't even know if we have the federal funding available?
More to get it through the design process, because if we have it shovel-ready, it'll be easier to allocate federal funds for it in the future.
How much money are we going to spend on the design process?
I'm anticipating approximately about $100,000. We've budgeted for it last year as part of that, and it goes carried over to this year.
So what would be the harm in just waiting and saving that $100,000 since there's no developer on the horizon and there's no, nothing pressing going on out there? This is way out on 132nd and Shram Road to 144th or 42nd or something like that? Is there something pressing that would require this to happen right now?
No, we've started the process. So when we initially given the, given the preliminary award, we started the process. So basically, I'd just be holding things up at the state level for that process. But if we weren't awarded and we waited, if the farther we're along in the design process, the easier it is to apply for other funding available. Previous, the previous time this administration was in office, they also focused on shovel-ready projects. So that would be the goal in this situation.
Now historically, when a developer develops a piece of land next to a major artery, they're usually asked to upgrade that artery. Isn't that correct?
Yes, but...
So we're, we're doing it for them before they even come along?
Well, no. Technically, our half is the veterans' half. The south side would be the county's side. Typically, the county would cover that cost. The county's going to cover the cost for that end of it. So it would be on the hook for, for roughly that, our half that we would normally be and that we can't assess the veterans', the veteran cemetery for that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgarden?
Can I follow up on that? Okay, look, looking at the staff report, it indicates the project is necessary to provide ADA-compliant facilities along Shram Road. Can you explain that?
Part of the project would not just be a three-lane. It would provide a trail to, to the cemetery itself and sidewalk on the southern side of the project. So it would, it would provide, basically, right now, it's just a roadway to the, just a roadway from the east to the cemetery. This would provide access off 144th, and it would provide, also provide a connection for sidewalk, which I believe the 132nd portion is currently under contract for design and to be completed by 2028, if I'm correct?
Okay, so the county brought this to us. Why, what do they say is the reason for why they want to do it?
I think it's due to connection, basically, to provide more paved connections going west and west throughout the county.
Currently, the only paved connection to the, to the veteran cemetery is from the west.
From the east. From the east. It's from the west, sorry.
From the highway, Highway 50. Yeah, I've driven both ways, and yes, that's very annoying when you want to go back east and you have to drive through the gravel road. Okay, I can see why they want us to do it. Thank you.
And I think part of what, a little bit of what both of you were hitting on too, I think part of what raised it to the county was actually our federal delegation coming down, realizing the national cemeteries are saying, "We can get some federal funding to finish that road off." And then that's kind of what started the ball rolling a little bit. Mr. Sunday, you had something else?
Are we, you want to debate now? Okay. I'm not opposed to paving this road at some point. I just don't think there's any need right now to be spending $100,000 unnecessarily. We are supposed to be wise stewards of taxpayer money. This doesn't get the taxpayer anything. We don't even know whether this project's going to go forward or not at, at this time, because we don't have the federal funding. So I, I think we should vote against this for now and come back when it's ripe for a positive vote, but it's not right now. So that's all.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarden?
I guess I, I wonder what, I, I see the point of saying, "Well, let's wait and not spend the money now. Let's wait until we really, until the feds have complied, have agreed that they're going to help pay for it." But the purpose, the primary purpose of this paving is to improve the access to this very important federal cemetery. And if we don't take this first step to show that we're willing to go out and at least get the design started, I think that lessens the probability that the federal government will now come forward and help us improve the access to the federal government's cemetery. So I, I think, yeah, we might be taking a chance that we'll do the design and then the federal government will just say, "Oh, forget it. We're not going to help you get people to and from our cemetery." But I think it's worth taking that risk at the moment to move this forward and, and declare that we want that done. And, because if you don't start making that declaration, I think history tells us the federal government might walk away.
Ms. Gluck?
Thank you. I think now is a good time to do it. I know nothing is getting cheaper, and a lot of what we've engineered in the past, maybe it has waited two or three years before it gets used, but it was cheaper to do it two or three years in advance as opposed to waiting for the last second. We also know that history has shown that we've had the opportunity for those shovel-ready projects, and because we had them there and we were there, we were able to get federal money that other communities across Nebraska and the United States wishes they had. The third item that I think is important to remember is that we're very fortunate to have the Vietnam Memorial, and it's a very simple drive to leave 108th Street, go to Shram Road, and drive on out there, except for you hit country roads and the dirt. That may not bother some, but it does bother others. And so I think we should be as ready as we possibly can to put that connectivity there and make it better.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Ingberg?
While it certainly makes some sense to not spend money, we don't have to exactly at the moment. Like Congressman Mumgarden said, the one thing that the feds will look at is if we have any skin in the game, if we have any interest to do this project long-term. And I think no matter how you shake it out, this is going to be done. It's going to be improved because of the location, because of the National Cemetery and everything in that area. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So I think it's wise to make some investment now to do what we need to do and move this project forward rather than just let it sit there, because it's going to happen. It's just a matter of when.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven years, one day by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 2059. An ordinance to approve the renaming of Matthews Drive, formerly Jana Street, is dedicated by the South Ridge Valley Final Platte to Belino Boulevard. Is there a councilwoman that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item D-2, Ordinance 2060, An Ordinance to Amend Section 170-31, Other Public Lands of Article 6 Required Public Improvements of Chapter 170, Subdivision of Land of the Papillion Municipal Code Having to Do with Park Dedication, The Applicant City of Papillion. It's Park Dedication Update. Is there a councilwoman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item D-3, Ordinance 2061. An Ordinance to Approve the Issuance of Public Safety Tax Anticipation Bond Series 2025. Is there a councilwoman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Gaines. As is our normal practice with bonds, there is a staff request to waive second and third readings. It does take a supermajority vote. Is there a motion to waive the second and third readings for Ordinance 2061? Motion by Councilman Fenslow, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Yes. If you state your name and address for the record, please.
Rachel Dunham, 707 Crest Drive. I'm not as well-versed in this one, because I was not here when the meeting, I believe, was brought up originally in November about the bond. My only concern is, in the fine print, it states that this has already been put into the budget. And is there any assurance that with that margin of $250,000, I believe is written, that there won't be a second bond needed that's not accounted for in the budget?
Only if it goes over budget.
Okay. But is that like...
We, we manage it, so it doesn't go over budget.
Okay.
And if it does, it's a total surprise, so can't guarantee it, but...
As long as it's not a trend or anything.
If you look at our historical practices, we're very responsible and generally don't go over budget.
But this main bond should cover the entire project. We're not foreseeing another secondary bond or anything?
We don't anticipate another bond.
Okay. Go.
Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. This is on the motion to waive.
Seven yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes, so motion to approve ordinance two thousand sixty-one? Motion by Councilman Fanclo? Second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, gonna give us a good interest rate, Bruce? Thank you. Item F-one, Ordinance two thousand fifty-eight, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, is there a motion to approve ordinance two thousand fifty-eight? Motion by Councilman Klug? Second by Councilman Fanclo. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F-two, Resolution R. twenty-five zero one zero zero, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Stockman's Hollow Subdivision Agreement, it's a public hearing, I'll open it, any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing, is there a motion to approve Resolution R. twenty-five zero one hundred? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, item F-three, Resolution R. twenty-five zero one zero four, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of Lot thirteen, Granite Falls Commercial, generally located at the northwest corner of South one hundred and eighth and Highway three seventy, applicant is Carol Surveying, Granite Falls Commercial Replat Three, is motion to approve Resolution R. twenty-five zero one zero four? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Fanclo. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, F-four, Resolution R. twenty-five zero one one four, a resolution to declare a vacancy of the Papillion City Council and to direct public notice of such vacancy, is there a motion to approve Resolution R. twenty-five zero one one four? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please, Mr. Mumgird.
Well, I'm gonna discuss the reason we're doing this. Um, as it says, uh, Councilmember Klug is resigning, and I'm not, I'm not gonna let that happen without saying something about it. Councilman Klug and I have served together here, I think, for twenty-five years, and, I look back at that and, you know, I look, look upon in general, what is it, there's a great honor to serve on the city council, and sometimes you would think that that's an unpleasant experience. But on the other hand, I look back at the twenty-five years I've spent serving with Luanne Klug, and I think, well, there's a certain element of great pleasure there. You know, you know, what brings you pleasure is when you serve with people who are smart, who are clearly working on behalf of the city, uh, they're not, uh, holding back, you know, hiding things from you, um, they disagree with you very pleasantly, uh, and, you know, they compromise when they can, and, and if they can't, well, then it's, the decision is made, and then you go on. I've just described Luanne Klug. That's my twenty-five years of, with Luanne. I, I, I think back over those years, and I can't think of a single time when, uh, I, I believed that, I began to think that Luanne was not genuinely trying to do what she thought was best for the city, even though I thought she was a hundred percent wrong. I, I knew that she believed it was the best thing for the city, and there have been some times when Luanne and I just could not see eye to eye, there've been other times when we've had compromises, and I look back at those and I think, you know, some of the time, some of those times, I was willing to compromise because of my faith in Luanne Klug. That she was trying to do something that she felt was good. Uh, she's, I've never had any reason to think that she was not acting in the way that she thought was best for the city, I've never had any reason to think that there's gonna be disagreement that'll hang in there, uh, it was always okay that we voted in different ways, go, go on. All of those things have, I look back and think, those are things that have, uh, created that kind of a situation among council members, I mean, I've been watching councils, I, I've spent a career working for the City of Omaha, and I've been watching councils for many, many years, and I'm fully aware that that's not the way that some council members interact, and that there is opportunity to walk away saying, I'm glad you're gone, I can't say that about Luanne Klug, it, that's not the way that Luanne has addressed being a city councilman, so, um, I guess I'll just tell her, thank you very much, Luanne, for being a council member that has added pleasure to my serving on the city council, best wishes to you.
Ms. Ringberg.
I also, um, can't let this go by without saying a couple things anyway. Tom, so elegant, eloquent as usual, that, um, I don't add much to it, but I too have served with Luanne for twenty-five years, and in addition to all the good things she's done for the city, I've always appreciated how she could, she could function within, uh, the parameters of the council and disagree without being disagreeable. You know, everything was a compromise, um, there were times when my phone would ring and I'd see it was her, and I would think, she wants something, and, um, I was ninety-nine percent right, but it was always about getting information, it was always about doing the right thing, and, uh, in addition to all the time and service she did on the council, I wanna say something other than that. Uh, Luanne and I have known each other despite the council for that many years, or actually longer, uh, we happen to have a connection between kids and, and, and the band, uh, we've had connections with, uh, uh, Boy Scouts, uh, our, our boys were scouts together, and so it goes far beyond with me than just sitting around this table. Um, I, I, whether she wants to admit it or not, I'd like to consider her a very good friend, uh, she's always given me good counsel, and I respect the hell out of her, and, um, there's times we've sat at this table, and she decides to make a point, and there's times, I think, and I don't mean this in a sexist way, I mean this as a compliment, she strikes me sometimes when she's the mother of Papillion, because she always looked out for the families, and she always looked out for the, 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 uh, citizens and, and the kids, and she was always, uh, when we were doing the landing, her and I spent a lot of time together, tried to do the right thing for the, the kids that would use it, and trust me, she made sure that it got done. So, thank you for all your service, um, I'm not gonna make this sound like a, um, a funeral service, because you have a lot more to give, and I expect to see you get back involved in things, because frankly, I don't think you cannot be involved. So, thanks for giving it, Luanne, it's been a pleasure.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Fanclo?
So, I've been on the council for two and a half years, not twenty-five and thirty, whatever Steve's been on, so I don't have as much experience with Luanne as some of you, but I've sat next to her for two and a half years, so, Luanne, thank you for everything you've done for me, I've enjoyed all of our conversations in these two chairs, at the library, on a couple issues, on Saturday mornings, whenever it was, but thank you very much for your service, and I will miss sitting next to you, thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate it.
I don't know my little cue thing, I gotta see which lights are blinking, Mr. Stube?
Yeah, I, I would also like to, uh, to thank Luanne for her years of service, obviously she just didn't look out for the, uh, the City of Papillion, she looked out for her constituents, because she served them for a significant period of time, so they also appreciated, uh, what she did for them in, in serving her ward, so again, thank you for your service.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, Luanne, uh, congratulations, and we are all obviously sad to see you go, uh, I've been serving on the council for six years with Luanne, and, um, I agree with Mr. Ringberg, she's always been a strong advocate for kids, um, with the landing, with her involvement in Boy Scouts, and with the band, and, uh, I don't know if I'd go with the mother of Papillion, but I see what you mean. But anyway, Luanne, uh, demonstrated really good leadership, um, more recently, um, with the housing ordinance, and you really tackled that thing, or grabbed it by the horns and led it to the finish line, and that was a great lesson for me, just to observe, well done, and we're gonna miss you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gaines?
Well, I kind of told you what I had to say on the phone, um, but publicly, I wanted to thank you for your service, to the community as a citizen. And then secondly, after I got elected about a little over twelve years ago, um, you were one of the first people that I really interacted with, and I wanted to thank you for taking the time and having the coffee at the downtown coffee shop in Starbucks, and I always appreciated that you and I, we didn't always see eye to eye, but many times you made me see a different point of view, and I think it made me better at doing my job, so I just wanted to thank you for all the time that you spent with the city and the time that you spent with me, and I'll miss you, and like I told you on the phone, uh, if you ever need anything, I'm here for you, so.
Mr. Glover.
Well, I, I would have to say that, uh, somebody made the comment about being the mother of, of the city council, and, and I think that goes a long way to see what Luanne is about, what she's always been about on the city council. She got me involved in the Boy Scouts, uh, as far as helping, uh, bring new scouts in and, and, uh, sit on the, the boards, um, and that was a great experience for me, and I would have never done that had she not had the, the, you know, the ability to, to come and ask and do it, because she knew that, um, being an educator, all the years I had, that, many of those kids I had in school, but also, um, having liked kids a lot too, so, thank you, we discussed a lot of things over the, over the phone, but, uh, you will be missed.
She's not afraid to ask either, 'cause I know, um, I served on a board for three years outside of city council because of her asking and asking and asking, so she's tenacious and about the kids, Ms. Powers.
Yep, and I just, on behalf of all the city employees, just thank you, Luanne, um, I will say, when I told department heads, it was just a sadness, because you have been a, just a fierce advocate of the city employees, and, and we all just really appreciate it, and also the citizens, your ward, like, we always knew, you represent Ward Three, you represent the, the citizens, but also a huge advocate of the employees, so thank you very much for all of that, and like, like Councilmember Ringberg said, this is, this is not a eulogy, you are not leaving, so, we will find ways to keep you engaged in the community, 'cause we know you'll, you'll be engaged anyways, so we look forward to continuing to find ways to work with you, and, and I know we'll see you around, but again, thank you for all you've done for the employees, and again, we will definitely miss you, and, and we are sad that, that you're leaving, but we also understand why, so.
I've got a proclamation I'd like to read too, if you wanna come up. And as she's coming up, I think my comment, one, somebody already mentioned it, huge advocate for kids, um, whatever we dealt with, um, if we weren't talking about kids, Luanne brought it up and wouldn't let us forget, so, community owes you a big, uh, big debt there, and, uh, I think you drilled it into us enough, we're not gonna forget it, um, but if you think of, uh, legacy, even generational impact, um, a lot of people aren't aware, the, the U-Boss program in our roads is because of Luanne, um, it used to be we budgeted, I don't remember the numbers, maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year for in-city road repair potholes and that, and we'd go through the budget process, and Luanne would say, our roads are horrible, that's not enough money, okay, so we would add fifty thousand to it for the next year, and thinking we were satisfying her and taking care of the roads, and then the next year, um, the roads are horrible, we don't have enough money, okay, let's put another fifty thousand in, and then after a while, let's put a hundred thousand in, pretty soon, I think we're up to about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, and she's still saying, we don't have enough money for the roads, and I'm thinking, how much is enough? And that was the start of, we didn't know the condition of the roads and we didn't have the data, and then it was Public Works that found that mapping system that we did about five years ago, and it was because of Luanne's continually questioning, uh, that we ended up, um, hiring that service that did the mapping, and then once we saw the color of the road conditions and learned about the U-Boss program, we took that two hundred and fifty thousand, and the next year it was two million dollars, and we've done two million dollars now every year for four years, um, and so we would not have that program but for Luanne and her, her being tenacious on, on a topic and being an advocate, so, community owes you a lot for that, so. I do have a proclamation I'd like to read, and, 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 eh, can't say it, in appreciation of Luanne Klug's twenty-five years of outstanding service to the City of Papillion, whereas Luanne Klug began her appointment with the City of Papillion in November two thousand, and has served twenty-five years on the Papillion City Council, whereas Luanne was raised with a strong understanding of the importance of helping your community, a value that has guided her throughout her service in Papillion, Luanne has consistently followed a collaborative approach, working with others and taking the time to listen, even when she might disagree, she was always had a goal of making our city a better place, whereas as a devoted mother and grandmother, Luanne has a passion for projects that benefit the youth of Papillion, her commitment to service extends beyond her official duties, she has been an active volunteer with the Boy Scouts of America for twenty-five years, in addition, she volunteers with her church, connecting with others that share her values and beliefs, whereas Luanne is a strong believer in the importance of diversity and the value of varied perspectives and effective governance, and has worked tirelessly to serve the citizens of Papillion, contributing to a safe, vibrant, and economically thriving community that retains its cherished small-town feel, whereas since Luanne has joined the city council, she has advocated for enhancing Papillion's infrastructure, leading to street improvements, park updates, and the launch of the Tower District Project in twenty twenty-two, whereas Luanne, Luan- Luanne has shown great passion, dedication, and commitment in representing the City of Papillion Ward Three, and has been highly valued and greatly appreciated by our city government and community, we now hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Luanne for twenty-five years of dedicated service to the City of Papillion, we express our gratitude to her for service and wish her all the best in the next chapter of life. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Here's another one.
And then we also have our little butterfly, and if people don't know the story about this, it's actually patented, um, can't recreate them, and there's only a certain number of them made, and, uh, she thought they were all gone, but we did have another one, so it's just Luanne, presented May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, for twenty-five years of dedicated and faithful service to the citizens and staff of the City of Papillion.
Awesome, thank you. It's mine, wow, once again, y'all are stuck listening to me, so, uh, this was not easy, but yet it was easy, I picked my family first, chose to, uh, start a new little chapter here, going to a different house with my husband, um, it's a nice ranch house that we're excited for, and while it does put me outside of city limits, it is causing me to resign from this, it is the right move, and it kind of reflects the values of Papillion. We've always been a strong community, we've always been strong about our families, and holding our values and our morals high, and in some small way in doing this, while it's, ooh, causes me to cry and makes me sad, I also hope that it shows people that we do the right thing, even when it's hard, because the next step is better. Heard many of my scout friends talk about the spoon that they carry in their pocket, you always save your spoon at a banquet, and you put it in your pocket, or if you're out of scout outing, you save your spoon and you always carry it with you, because the best is yet to come, so keep your spoon ready, because there's always something more coming for you, and I don't know what's next other than a wonderful house and a great family, my husband, Jeff, my son David, my daughter Brandy, and my son Kellen have all shown up to support me tonight, they know how much I love this city, ooh, sorry, Kellen at four and a half years of age would knock on doors for me, before I could get to the doors, and his sister would quickly run up behind him, saying, I'll help, and David would get there and say, so, could you vote for my mom? And these poor constituents wouldn't even- And these poor constituents wouldn't even know my name. So it's always been a family thing. And I look forward to continuing to be a part of the Papillion family. I may be moving outside of city limits, but we are all still in the Papillion jurisdiction. And we look forward to seeing every one of you at all of the events. Thank you for the honor of being here with a great team. Thank you to the citizens who have allowed me this opportunity to serve in this way. And I'm excited to see where you all lead Papillion in the next chapter.
And with that, Resolution R250114, please vote.
I give a vote. I'm learning this protocol. Hope you will, this. I choose my family.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports. Golf ad hoc.
That would be me. So, yep, the golf ad hoc committee met at 6:00 this morning, or 6:00 this evening, before this meeting, sorry. We talked about the, and golf staff was there as well. We discussed the next series of projects that will be included in the capital improvement program for the two golf courses, obviously Eagle Hills and Terra Hills. There are some high priority items that we discussed. I'll just name a few. The pump station installation and construction at Terra Hills to help with the pumps, right? And then the irrigation system is a real big-ticket item, but it's a real high priority. We had a really good discussion about the asset that both of our golf courses are. And these are two critical pieces of infrastructure on Terra Hills Golf Course. We think it's vitally important that the repairs are made and those systems continue to function well because of the investment in the golf course. So unanimous to fund both of those, at least that's our recommendation. And then the biggest ticket item at Eagle Hills is the HVAC system at the clubhouse. It's 20-some years old and it's on its last leg. So we talked about replacing that instead of trying to find parts and keep piecing it together. So we are all in agreement that that has to be repaired, too. There were other things we talked about, walls around the lakes, the ponds, to make them safer. So we talked a whole bunch of things, but in the end, positive recommendation from the committee to fund those projects in the next capital improvement program.
Thank you. And I think that was all the committees that met. Any comments from the floor? We have a scout with us, you want to come up and introduce yourself? Got to come up and tell us your name and what troop you're with. And what brings you out?
I'm Simon Moore, I'm from Troop 461, and I'm here for my Communication Mayor badge.
Any other comments from the floor? Council comments? Just the last couple of weeks, Chamber had this 2025 State of the County. Each of the cities gave an update on major initiatives they're working on. And leadership, Ms. Powers mentioned Leadership Sarpy graduation, Lieutenant Sharp graduated from that. And two of the legacy projects from the program are benefiting Papillion. One was the Veterans Park signage, and the other one was the Papio Trail mural. And Vita Nova had their annual celebration, Mr. Fenslow is there. They installed a piece of public art outside their main entrance. I don't know if you heard the cost or not, but it's probably 12 feet tall, at least. It's a solid piece of granite from Zimbabwe that was brought over and sculpted. And I think they said it weighs over 4,000 pounds, but it's outside the facility. So if you're ever out there, take a look at it, it's pretty unique. So, it's a unique program they have out there. Had the half marathon this weekend, want to thank Tim Moran for all of his work. We have about 50 volunteers for that, a lot of work to put it on. But we had about 528 people register. That was sold out. And about 40% of those are Papillion residents, so 60% are coming into Papillion for that. But 52 of them are actually from out of state, 16 different states. And that's fairly typical of that race series. And started talking to people over time of, you just happened to be here, right? No, we registered and came here for this event. So it's got an economic impact, people staying in the hotels and eating and some of that other stuff. So, Tim just did a great job, 32 Nebraska cities. Youngest was four years old and the oldest was 81 years old. That was participating in the 510, I mean, the 5K and the 10K. Again, Memorial Day, we got two events on Monday, 11:30 at the Omaha National Cemetery, and then 2:00 at the Papillion Cemetery with the Legion. So, any other council comments? If not, oh yeah, there is a reception for you afterwards. We've got some cake out in the hallway, so stay around and thank Luanne that way. Luanne, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Klug, is there a second? Second by Councilman Sunday, please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.